No new applications will be heard after 9:30 p.m. and no new testimony will be taken after 10 p.m. Hearing assistance is available upon request. Accommodations will be made for individuals with a disability pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, provided the individual with the disability provides 48 hours' advance notice to the Planning Department Secretary before the public meeting. However, if the individual should require special equipment or services such as a cart transcriber, seven days' advance notice excluding weekends and holidays may be necessary. Please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please?
And just for the record, Chairman Vasio is absent. Mayor Munch is absent. Councilman Kirsch is absent. Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Mr. Magora.
Yes.
Mr. Wang is also absent. Chairperson Sakura.
Here.
Mr. Banga.
Here.
And Mr. Chowdhury. Mr. Peck, Board Attorney.
I'm here.
Mr. Burr, Board Engineer.
Here.
And Ms. Catherine Samard, Board Planner.
At this time, any members of the public wishing to address the board with any matters not on the agenda, please move forward. Please state your name and address.
Kathy Franco, 766 Weemack Road. Couple of things. One is, I was wondering where minutes are to meetings. I printed off from 2020 to the present, and there's a number of meetings that we don't have minutes to, dating back all the way to, and I'll leave this for the secretary so that they can double-check, December 8th of 2020, October of 2020, January of 2022, July of 2021, March of 2023, February of 2023, two meetings in January of 2023, October 1st of 2024, October 24th of 2024, December 3rd of 2024, December 17th of 2024, 3/24 of '25, and 3/18 of '25. So it's really helpful for the public to be able to look at minutes, and I would think for yourselves as members of, and to be able to, I don't know if these minutes have been approved and just not posted on the website and made available, but as a planning board, I don't know how you're going to go back if they haven't been approved. So should I leave this with the secretary, or should I leave it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I know I'm only supposed to talk about items not on the agenda. In, on March 18th, I came to this meeting, and I asked about the master plan. And at that time, I believe the town planner reported, which we don't have minutes, but I listened to the tape yesterday, and she had stated that she had hoped that that would be available in June. So I was just wondering when we might, as a public, see that master plan, because I know we're making additional amendments to it tonight.
So this evening, we are not making amendments to the master plan, and tonight is just a.
I don't know that you're on the.
Sorry.
Okay.
Tonight, we're not making amendments to the master plan. We'll provide an update later, well, I guess I'll provide it now. The master plan is in its final stages. We're just teeing it up. We're hoping to adopt it at the end of September.
So the planning board will adopt at the end of September, and then it will go to the town council?
The council is not a responsible body for a master plan. It's entirely with the planning board to adopt that master plan.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Just want to be sure. Don't have anything else that's not on, so items on the agenda, will there be opportunities to comment on those?
Yeah, technically, this is for, it's open to the public, except for anything where there's going to be a public hearing, you know, where you would otherwise be able to be heard. But if there's something on the agenda that wouldn't be the subject of a public hearing, you're free to ask.
Okay, so as far as the amendment, amending R-10A?
Those are zoning ordinances that were introduced by the township council, and by law.
Well, they have not yet. They'll be introduced on Thursday.
No, my understanding is they've been introduced, and they're up for a public hearing and adoption at the next council meeting. But by law, anytime a zoning ordinance is introduced, it gets referred to the planning board, which has to make a determination as to whether it's consistent with the master plan. So that's what these are tonight. It's for the board to make a consistency determination to report back to the council.
Okay, so is this a time to comment on that, or not, or we don't get a comment?
If you have something to say relative to whether it's consistent with the master plan, otherwise, I think you'd be better served to make your comments to the council, which is actually going to be having the public hearing and will be considering whether or not to adopt.
Well, I will be there as well, but I would just like to, you know, so my question is, I looked at the zoning map, and I couldn't see 10A anywhere on the zoning map. I saw R-10 on the zoning map. I didn't see 10A. But I understand 10A is 10,000 square feet, it's 80-foot width, it's 35% lot coverage, it's 2.5 stories, it's 35 feet, and it's an FAR of 2.5. So now, we're going to an FAR of .6, zero, maximum coverage of 60%, as opposed to 35%. It talks about a side yard setback of zero feet next to commercial uses in what I understand is going to be a residential, so I don't understand why that's even included in this amendment.
Planner will be, see, again, that has nothing to do with this board.
Well, no, because.
This board did not prepare that ordinance.
But you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna talk about it.
Determine whether or not it's consistent with the master plan, and our planner's going to be leading that discussion with the board. So you'll hear all the details then.
So the public really doesn't get to comment, is what.
Not today, no. I mean, you can make a comment now, but it's not a question and answer, or anything like that. You can, if you have something to say relative to whether or not this is consistent with the master plan, you're welcome to state it.
Okay, my other question is, you're going to be talking about, I think, adding 126 through 21.10, is that AH3 affordable housing zone tonight? Is that part of your meeting tonight as well?
It's the same thing as the other one.
Okay, so.
The consistency.
Okay, so I think that has to do with Block 406, Lot 2.01 specifically, that you're looking at?
We're not looking at anything. This is, we're just determining whether the ordinance that was introduced by the council is.
Well, but, so if you look at the ordinance that's been introduced by the council, which I have in front of me, okay, it talks about a specific lot and block.
And again, our planner will lead through all that. We're not, we're not.
Well, no.
We're not debating the merits of this.
Excuse me, excuse me.
No.
No, no, you need to excuse me, because I feel that you're shutting me down, and you're saying you're gonna.
Because it's, you're going beyond the scope of what this section is about.
But these individuals, these individuals who represent the constituents of this township are going, are going to make a decision.
Make it up with the council.
Ms. Franco, we haven't discussed this piece yet on the consistency of the, of the master plan or not. What I think your questions are better suited for, or the comments are for, the town council during public hearing.
And I attend those meetings as well. So I was wondering, because you're going to talk about a ordinance, okay, which is going to go back to the town council, so do you know exactly where Block 406, Lot 2.01 is located in this township?
Our planner will be leading that discussion in due course.
We haven't.
This is not a question and answer period. If you have a statement to make, make.
Well, I feel it's unfortunate that that question cannot be answered, because when I looked it up, okay, all it said is it is located somewhere on 202, 206, and it's owned by somebody whose mailing address is not in this town. So I appreciate your time. I do not appreciate your abruptness, Mr. Peck.
Doily noted.
Good, I'm glad it's doily noted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, do any other members of the public have anything, any comment for anything that is not on the agenda tonight? Great. We won't close the public portion of the meeting. At this time, we're going to move to look at the approval for June 2025 special meeting minutes. Are there any comments or questions from June 25th?
I'm of approval.
Mr. Pappas. Mr. Chowdhury.
Yes.
Mr. Magora?
Yes.
Chairperson Sakura?
Yes.
And Mr. Chowdhury.
Now, we'll move to the resolutions.
Yeah, there's just the one for racks and restaurants.
Okay, so we'll move to resolutions, racks and restaurants, extension of prior approval application 21-024-PB on 44 Fender and Avenue. Are there any comments or questions? Can I request a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Banga?
I'll second it.
Mr. Pappas?
Yes.
Mr. Magora?
Yes.
Chairperson Sakura?
Yes.
Mr. Banga?
Yes.
Mr. Chowdhury? That's it.
Great, thank you. All right, now, we're going to open it up to the master plan ordinance consistency review. Ms. Samard, do you want to take it from here?
Thank you. Everyone should have received, I prepared just a short memo on the consistent, consistency review for the board to follow. As you know, this board was transmitted two ordinances, ordinance number 25-0807-196 and ordinance 25-08-07-197. Both of these ordinances are ordinances that effectuate zoning changes that were in the fourth round Housing Element Fair Share Plan that was adopted by this board in, on June 25th, 2025. So I'll start with the R-10A zone amendment, which was 25-08-07-196. The town council has transmitted this. They did introduce the ordinance, and now it is the planning board's opportunity to, and requirement, to ensure that this amendment to the zone is consistent with the master plan. That's listed under NJSA 40:55D-226, which is the referral powers to the planning board. The planning board has to provide the town council with either a report that says this is not inconsistent with the master plan, and with that, the, a memo or resolution that states that, or provide that it is inconsistent and any reason, anything that would make it more consistent. And so the documents that were reviewed against this ordinance was the most recent master plan document, which was that dated June 12th, Fourth Round Housing Element Fair Share Plan, that was adopted by this board June 25th, 2025. In particular, the Housing Element Fair Share Plan included the township's requirement to address its fourth round obligation of 421. It included specific sites to address that obligation, and provided all the statutory requirements for housing element. In particular, page 28 of the housing element includes that, the sites that were listed as the land that was most appropriate for the construction of low and moderate income housing, which included, under that, number four, Whitney Court, located on Block 511, Lot 3, within the R-10A zone. This property specifically, the township was approached by a group called CCC Housing that does do group homes, 100% affordable housing, seeking to partner in the construction of a group home or supportive needs home for people who are deaf or hard of hearing. And so this will be a new group home, five bedrooms within it, so not five apartments, it'll be a five-bedroom home essentially. And the zone amendment, the amendments to the R-10A zone are essentially to effectuate that change. The R-10A zone is a very small zone located, if you look on the zoning map, just north of the mall zone, the C2BRC zone, and it's kind of sandwiched between a few zones on north, off of North Bridge Street. There are actually a number of group homes already in that area. We just heard one at the zoning board for Visions and Pathways. Visions and Pathways has some of their offices there, they have other parts of their program there. That was a 10-bedroom group home that was approved by the zoning board, and so that area does have a mixture of residential, commercial, and, or there's some dentist office and things like that, right in the C6 zone adjacent to it, and then some group homes. So there are a few of those. This was formerly township-owned property in order to utilize this property for the, for the Housing Element Fair Share Plan, for what I think is a good use, especially for a population that's in need of housing. It was included in the housing element. And so for all of those reasons, especially that this is a site that's specifically called out in the housing element, my opinion is that this ordinance is consistent with the master plan, in that it effectuates the necessary zoning in order to make realistic opportunity for low, for affordable housing for low and moderate income households, which is the whole intention of the housing element. And so this ordinance helps that along, and I do think it is consistent for those reasons.
I'll leave it from the board.
Right. All right, so I'll open it up to the board for any comments or questions that the board may have.
I just had one question. So could you just elaborate where exactly this property is located?
So if you go off. I don't have, I don't have some HDMI access, but if you are on North Bridge Street, and you turn on to, I believe it's, you would take Fourth, Fourth Street off of North Bridge, in the back there, there's, there's to, a street you'd take up, I can't remember which one that is, give me one second to look that up. There's Shasta is over there, and then, it's Shasta that you would take up, and Whitney Drive is a cul-de-sac, is a dead end actually, up to the C6 zone there, and it's a dead end, it's right behind the Dental Care Bridgewater Building, if that gives you any, which is on North Bridge Street. So it's, it's adjacent to or perpendicular to North Bridge Street.
Can you say that it's consistent with other, group zone, group homes in that area?
So, as of right, the municipal land use law actually does permit community residence facilities in all residential zones. So group homes are permitted as of right. Our zoning ordinance actually does call out group homes as a permitted use, and so the use-wise, it's fine. It just, there are some, in order to, to fit the type of, the style of the house that they need, so there's certain requirements they need for ADA accessibility and things like that, the R-10A zone is essentially being changed just to modify some of the bulk standards so that it is as of right, and they wouldn't require any zoning relief, any bulk variance relief. And that's particularly important, because for a project like this, funding is very important through federal and state resources, and so in order to qualify for certain funding, they need the zoning to be as of right, which is why this ordinance was changed and why it's before this board now, so that they can seek the funding necessary to get that group home funded.
And this also advances the objectives of the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, of the master plan, which calls for the township to meet its constitutional obligation.
Correct.
Provide this sort of.
Correct, and if I didn't mention that, I'm sorry, but yes, it, it captures not only the particular site that is mentioned in the housing element, but it also furthers the township goals of, and requirements to meet its constitutional obligation.
Are there comments or questions?
And just for clarity, this is the only, this is the only property that is, that needs R-10A?
So there's probably 20 other properties that are in the R-10A zone. There are a lot of existing single-family homes.
Sorry, I meant area of Bridgewater.
Oh, there's, I don't believe there's any other areas that are R-10A. It's, as I mentioned, a kind of small, small zone.
Any other?
So a resolution has been prepared, if someone wants to make the motion to deem it consistent.
I'll move that.
Correct. Yeah, not the AH3.
All right, this is the first resolution.
I'll second that.
Mr. Pappas, and then Mr. Banga.
Yes.
Mr. Magora?
Yes.
Chairperson Sakura?
Yes.
Mr. Banga?
Yes.
And Mr. Chowdhury?
Thank you. We'll move on to the second portion of the master plan ordinance consistency review for the ordinance of the Township of Bridgewater amending the R-10A single-family zone.
Yes, give me one second. So the second ordinance is the ordinance number 25-08-07-197, and that is the proposed AH3 zone. The, this is a little bit different than the other ordinance in that it proposes a new zone, but very similar to the other zone. It too is a site that was included in the fourth round Housing Element Fair Share Plan, dated June 12th, 2025, that was adopted by this board on June 25th, 2025, and this is for a specific piece of property, Block 406, Lot 2.01. I apologize that there's not, there's no tax address to it, it is just listed as Route 202, 206, because it does have frontage on Route 202, 206, but it won't have access from Route 202, 206, because there's no access available there. It is sandwiched between Cornell Boulevard and Route 202, 206, just north of the Time to Eat diner, so it's just past that site. And it's about a one-and-a-half acre site, and this ordinance seeks to create the AH3 zone to permit an 11-unit multifamily rental building, which will be 100% affordable. It will have credits for only, no market rate units, only affordable, income-restricted apartments, as well as a four-unit rental building for disabled veterans and their families. And so this is another project that does require zoning to be in place in order to seek the funding to make something like this realistic and possible. This property is, I believe in a, it's on the commercial, it's in the C2, don't quote me on that, one of the C zones, give me one second to look at that. I believe it's the C2, or C1 zone, it's the C1 zone, and it is being proposed to be in, just a strictly affordable housing, just to permit what I just said, the 11-unit multifamily and the four-unit disabled veterans, all 100% affordable. The, as I mentioned, this site is specifically noted on page 28, under that land that is most appropriate for the construction of low and moderate income housing, under number five, Cornell Boulevard. That's how the site is designated in the plan. Similar to the other ordinance, I do believe that this site will effectuate the goals of, the general goals of the Housing Element Fair Share Plan, to meet the township's fourth round obligation, and it also will effectuate the specific site notes that were in the Housing Element Fair Share Plan to include this site, and to allow for it to create a realistic opportunity for low and moderate income housing in the township. And for those reasons, I do believe that this ordinance is also consistent with the township's master plan.
Thank you. We'll open up to the board for any comments or questions. I do have one question. You said it's a, they're rental units, right?
Yes.
Great. And this is the only property affected by the change in zone?
This, this zone will be specifically just Block 406, Lot 2.01, and that will comprise the entirety of the AH3 zone.
Thank you.
For the fourth, yes, for the fourth round obligation, correct. I believe it will be rental.
I want to move that mic closer to you.
Yes.
So does the 11 unit also?
The 11 unit is only, is for families.
But it's rental.
It's rental as well, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Just for clarity, so on the resolution, it says to permit affordable multifamily residential development and disabled veteran housing. To me, it kind of reads that it has to be affordable and disabled veterans, but because in your, in your note, your consistency is one and then the other, right? So there's four-unit family rental for disabled veterans, but the other one is not necessarily for disabled veterans?
Correct.
As we adopt this resolution, just want to make sure that's clear for.
Do you want to specify where in the resolution that is?
Right up, so.
Right at the front.
So it should be, you're suggesting it should say to permit affordable multifamily residential development or disabled veterans housing?
I think so.
Or, and A.
And affordable, disabled, I think it'd be and affordable disabled.
Yeah, Catherine, why don't you say how this should be, because then the board can just, if they're so inclined, can, can adopt the ordinance, the resolution as amended.
Yeah, I think the, as I understand the question, and I think it's a good one, it should read after the word "zone," to permit affordable multifamily residential development and affordable disabled veterans housing. Would that, would that address it?
Okay, put the affordable in there.
Just affordable, so that it's, it's, it's own, I feel like the affordable disabled veterans housing makes it a separate.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's a point well made. Want to make sure that the rest of that is.
Does that leave it open to say that it has to be both?
Well, both uses are permitted. Both uses are supposed to happen, according to our housing element. In the housing element, the, this site is supposed to produce 15 total units of affordable housing. So you're right in that it may not be both, but technically, we find.
But if you look at, if you look at the fourth whereas, it references the fourth round housing element. And the fourth round housing element was very specific that this site would have two structures, one 11-unit rental for families, affordable, and then a four-unit affordable rental units for veterans, disabled veterans. So that, that's specific.
Great, so then there's no room for interpretation.
No, it won't ever be 15 units of multifamily residential, it will always be 11 and.
Right. Can I request a motion, and somebody will make the motion as amended?
Yeah, to deem the, to deem the ordinance consistent and to adopt the, the, I keep saying ordinance, the resolution, you know, as amended, which is simply adding affordable in that second whereas.
That's Mr. Banga, and then Mr. Chowdhury. Thank you.
Mr. Pappas?
Yes.
Mr. Magora?
Yes.
Counsel, Chairperson Sakura?
Yes.
Mr. Banga?
Yes.
And Mr. Chowdhury?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our first application of the evening. We'll start with the application 20-021-PB, COE Bridgewater LLC, Thor Technologies, Route 201, 206, and 287, Block 483, Lot 17.
Lee James from the Law Firm, Alon Skoman &amp; Spitzer, on behalf of the applicant.
Kaley James from the law firm, Valance, Goman and Spitzer, on behalf of the applicant, COE Bridgewater LLC.
Could you run that up a little bit?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
There you go. Kaley James from the law firm, Valance, yes.
Could you spell that, please?
Yes, K-A-Y-L-E-E, and then James, like the man's name.
Thanks.
So as you likely know, tonight, we, the applicant is asking for an extension of the preliminary and final site plan and bulk variance approval associated with application number 20-021-PB. Just to give some background about the property, the property is located along Route 202-206 in condo units two and three and block 483, lot 17. The property consists of approximately 30 acres in the ORD zone, and it's part of a larger research and development campus. The campus itself has seven buildings with about 654,000 square feet of leasable floor area for things like office, research, life sciences, and pharmaceutical uses. So the applicant acquired the property in August of 2019. At that time, it was at 80% occupancy, and then by 2020, it was 100% occupancy. Being that tenants were looking to expand to avoid losing any tenants, the applicant came to the board and requested that preliminary and final site plan approval for a 55,176 square foot life sciences building for similar uses as the research and development campus. The board granted the, the application on February 23, 2021, and then the resolution was adopted on April 27, 2021. As you likely know, pursuant to section 52 of the MLUL, the, a final approval confers vested rights for a period of two years with three one-year extensions available. Tonight, the applicant is asking for all three one-year period of extension at the same time, which would extend the approval to April 27, 2026. The reason that the applicant is asking for this now, as detailed in their quest, is that due to market changes and existing tenants that were at one point interested, no longer having interest in expanding, there was no reason, or they could not obtain a tenant at that time. Now that there has been interest, they would like to proceed with the approval in full force and effect. If you have any questions, we have our engineer here tonight, as well as a representative from COE that could provide testimony.
Let me see if the board has questions.
Great, so we'll open up to the board first for questions or comments.
I'm sorry?
Benson?
So I would have to confirm if it was done at the original time of the approval, but all we're asking to do is to continue with the approval that we received in 2020, or 2021.
And any of the conditions that were imposed at the time of that approval, they would carry forward. They'd still have all the same obligations that were imposed.
Previously, okay.
Right, so if they have to do some environmental reporting or testing, they still have to do that before they can be deemed compliant with their approval and proceed to construction.
Okay. Thank you.
And just for clarity, so is this separate from the lack of better word, warehouses that were, that were approved, I think, as part of the COE? This is, this is the same property, correct? So is, no?
The Advanced? So the campus, just to give a little bit of background, so we share the campus, it's, part of it is our, we're, we're the ORD zone, which is the research and development. And then there's a part of the campus that's owned by Advanced, and then they have what's called the R-seed zone.
R-seed, yes.
I think that might be what you're referring to, but.
So is this, this is not that?
No.
This is for research.
This parcel is.
Specifically research and development.
Yeah, this is adjacent directly to the highway, 287. It's the rear portion that Thor does not front directly onto 202-206, correct? Yeah.
Okay, no questions?
No questions?
Not on this.
Okay.
So just if the board doesn't have any, any further questions, someone can make a motion to grant the requested three one-year extensions.
All at one time?
All at one time. Which would be good through April 27 of 2026.
Mr. Papas? Mr. Banga?
Mr. Papas?
Yes.
Mr. Magora?
Yes.
Chairperson Sakura?
Yes.
Mr. Banga?
Yes.
Mr. Chowry?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you, have a good night.
All right, now we'll move to the second application of the evening, application number 25-005-PB RJBR Holdings LLC Roman Jewelers, 500 Commons Way, block 551, lot 1.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, board professionals, members of the public. My name is Michael Silver, and I'm an attorney at the law firm, DeFrancesco Bateman, located in Warren Township, New Jersey. It is my privilege this evening to represent the applicant, RJBR Holdings LLC, doing business as Roman Jewelers. This application is for minor site plan approval concerning the property located at 500 Commons Way, identified as block 551, lot 1, on the township's tax maps. And the property lies in the C2 Regional Retail Business Zone District. The property is presently improved with an approximate 6,874 square foot, single-story masonry building, which is currently occupied by Roman Jewelers. Roman Jewelers is a longstanding and valued small business in the township. And Roman Jewelers proposes a 2,711 square foot, second-floor addition over the eastern portion of the existing building. And that addition, as you'll hear tonight, will provide office and storage space, and it will also provide an elevator, egress stairs, mechanical room, conference room, employee lounge, and will result in a reconfiguration of the first floor. Importantly, no changes are proposed to the existing building footprint or site layout, so you won't hear testimony tonight about changes to site drainage, lot coverage, stormwater management, traffic circulation. Parking is staying the same. No changes to landscaping and buffering or exterior lighting. Just by way of quick background, the property's been subject to previous variance applications and has received variance relief and exceptions, design waivers, including minimum front-yard setback from Fifth Street and Commons Way, as well as a minimum lot area relief. It's a corner lot, so it has different requirements as a corner lot. And if the public or the board were interested in finding those variances, they can find it in resolutions that were accompanied with the application dating back to 2013 and 2018. I can represent that the proposed improvements do not exacerbate any of the previously granted variances. And while the property is a lawfully existing undersized lot, we certainly don't believe new variance relief is required, but to the extent the board or the board's professionals feel differently, we're seeking any necessary relief with respect to this application. The applicant is in receipt of the joint review memo from Mr. Burr and Ms. Sarmad dated August 14, 2025, which we will, we will address in our presentation. We've also reviewed correspondence from the zoning officer, fire marshal, police, tax assessor, as summarized in the August 14, 2025 Planning Department report. We have no objections to those reports. We can comply entirely. I do have a question regarding the soar utility memo dated August 5, which I'll raise later on in the hearing. I believe we can comply, just a question. So moving on to our presentation, I'm joined this evening by one, one witness, Mr. Arthur Hen, the applicant's architect and expert witness. I'm also joined by Ms. Lucy Zimmerman, a principal of the applicant, who can address the board if necessary, answer any questions, provide any, any necessary testimony. So with that, Mr. Peck, I would ask you to just confirm, if I can too, that our notice was, was adequate and proper.
Notice was adequate and proper. This board does have jurisdiction to hear the application.
Thank you very much. And if I can have my first witness sworn, Madam Chair.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're going to give in the course of this hearing will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very good. Could you state and spell your name for the record?
Arthur Hen, H-E-N-N.
Okay.
Thank you. So, Mr. Hen, if you would just start off, can you just briefly summarize your education background, your educational background and your experience in architecture? And if you've testified before any planning and zoning boards in Jersey in the past?
Yes, I have. Been practicing for 25 years. Went to school at NJIT. Had my own practice for 25 years. I've been before, before a number of boards, most recently earlier this summer in Cranford. Been accepted there. My license is in good standing and.
And you've previously been accepted before this board, I believe?
In 2013 and 2018, yes.
So, Madam Chair, I would ask that you accept Mr. Hen as a, as an expert witness in the field of architecture?
Yeah, if the board has any questions or.
The board have any questions? Great, if you could proceed.
Are you an RA or an AIA?
AIA.
So, Mr. Hen, why don't you go ahead and talk about the, the plan that you prepared before the board this evening and, and address some of the existing and proposed conditions?
Okay.
And these were submitted with the?
Yes, they were.
As is, not changed up?
They, actually, that's a, I was going to get to that. These were submitted, however, there was a discrepancy in the bulk standards table. One digit was off with respect to floor area. Doesn't change the, doesn't change, we meet all of the requirements, but.
In your final, assuming it get approved, you can just take care of that?
Yes, exactly. So everything else is the exact same except for that minor scrivener's error.
I essentially just use the, you know, the project review report as an outline for my presentation tonight. I can go through the bulk standards chart, basically, without getting into a lot of detail about it, you know, the lot cover, the lot area, is it pre-existing non-conforming? The front yard setback and the front yard setback on both Commons Way and Fifth Street are variances that were previously approved. The lot width, rear yard setback, minimum side yard setback, maximum improved lot coverage, floor area ratio, and building height are all conforming conditions. There is no changes to the site plan, the building footprint, the site layout, drainage, coverages, stormwater management, traffic circulation, landscaping, buffering, or exterior lighting, or pedestrian access. There's no new plan for exterior, you know, lighting planned. We're just doing that second floor addition. If you look at the site plan, this is, if you look at this, yeah, thank you. If you look at the site plan, it's that shaded area, so that second floor doesn't even cover the whole entire first floor. You know, and then going through the site plan, there was a recommendation in the report to add a note that all proposed roof gutters be directed to existing onsite drainage facilities. That's, makes a lot of sense, and then, and we'll do that. With the proposed addition, 38 parking spaces are required, and there are 47 spaces existing, so we're still well within compliance with parking. There's no change to the signage. There was a question on the, in the report regarding the pylon sign on that site plan. It was made a comment about a new sign. That was from the previous 2013 submission, so there's no change to any signage on the building or, you know, out at the street, just for clarification. I brought the existing layout, which was not submitted. I don't know if we want to submit that as an exhibit, just for context of programming?
That'd be great, thank you.
I have two copies we can submit. So just to kind of, you know.
Is that A1?
This is A1, yes. This is the floor plan of the existing condition. And again, just to show programming and context, the entrance is going to be the same. As you walk in, there is a showroom. To the right, there's additional display showroom space. We have jewelry pair, a conference room towards the front, secondary uses with three offices, general office space, storage, you know, employee lounge. Those secondary uses were, the proposed is to move them up to the second floor, so that way we can gain more showroom space on the first floor. That's the main generator behind this project. So basically, on the second floor, we'll be moving those secondary uses upstairs.
Did you say storage was part of that too?
Yes, as well as the conference room.
And the employee lounge?
Employee lounge and a restroom. Well, there's restroom still on the first floor, but we'll add new ones upstairs as well. So just to show what's there and in relation to what we're proposing. Which is page PB1-3. Basically, as, like I said, you walk in, showroom space gets larger, and then those functions that were towards the back moved upstairs. So we just had some bathrooms, new stairs to take you up to the second floor, and all those other functions moved upstairs. I guess in terms with the, the business operations, there was a question about that in the report. Similar to what we're doing now, similar hours of operation, deliveries, site maintenance, all that stuff is going to be the same. They get deliveries, you know, once or twice a day from, you know, through UPS and FedEx, you know, no big trucks or anything like that, just normal deliveries. There's a question in the report regarding number of employees. Basically the same, potentially maybe three more with the expansion, but nothing significantly increased.
How many employees are there currently?
Currently, there are 22 total, 15 onsite at a time, potentially.
Thank you.
The existing building height at the facade is 31 feet, you know, the front facade, which is the tallest part of the building. The proposed addition is going to be 27 feet to the ridge that we're putting on there. So that's lower than the current tallest part of the building. So, you know, there's not going to be a significant increase in, in height with this second-floor addition. The first floor currently has, you know, the three hard offices. There'll be three hard offices upstairs, you know, basically the general office space will get increased in size. Employee lounge and the storage area is going to a little bit bigger upstairs as well. Just regarding the, the square footage, go through those numbers. The existing is 6,874 square feet. We're proposing 2,711 square feet, and the total will be 9,585 square feet. So just for the sake of clarification, what we're talking about before. The proposed work does not conflict with any of the conditions of the prior approvals from 2013 or 18. And I know there was a question in the report too regarding the rooftop units. The intent is that they would stay on the main first floor level and not above on the new second floor, so there would be no increase of, you know, height in terms of, you know, screening or anything like that. It'll still be on that main level where they are now.
Like behind that raised parapet?
Behind the ra, yeah, behind that raised parapet and, you know, between that and that proposed addition in the back. I think that pretty much covers all the points in that report.
Thank you very much. That was, I just have one, one question. Do you know if there's any temporary disruption expected during construction of the ordinary business operations? I guess is staging required, anything like that?
There's plenty of parking if there's any staging materials, you know, and the lot's not occupied 100% to capacity, so I suspect that would might happen at the side. The entrance should be, well, you know, we're renovating the whole entire first floor, so, you know, it probably won't be occupied during that part of it, but, but I guess, yeah, I don't know if there's going to be anybody going in and out during, during construction, if you think about it.
So if, if a staging and logistics plan was required prior to the issuance of building permits, we can comply if, if it's necessary or deemed necessary by, I guess, Mr. Burr, the building department?
We could, we could definitely do that. I think there's plenty of room to make it work, you know, it's not going to be an issue.
I don't have any further questions.
I will first open it up to the board members for any questions.
Yes. Does that building have a basement?
No, there's no basement.
The reason I ask is you're increasing the occupied area, that's going to increase your HVAC. When you discuss the HVAC a little bit, I'm concerned about new air handlers on the roof or stacks, heights, things of that nature.
So, this, this is the proposed second floor. Probably should've touched on that a little bit. But, this area here along the back is the only area that is, that we're going over the first floor. So, there's all this section here, that's first floor rooftop, where there's existing units that will, you know...
Couple small units.
Yeah, a couple small units up there. So, everything will be still at that level, at that, you know, second floor level, you know, first floor roof level. We're not gonna be putting anything above that, the new proposed second floor.
I noticed they were cleverly hidden behind the two towers.
And that's, and that's gonna be the same. That's not changing at all. Yeah, yeah.
Well, how is the building heated?
Those rooftop units, yeah. And there's no, there's, yeah, they're, everything's by those units up on the roof.
What level?
I believe it's gas. Yes. I'd have to go back a while, but I'm pretty sure it's gas.
And one last question, an observation actually. The site plan from Sires, it's old.
Yes.
It's, falls out for 1,670 square feet. Possibly, you wanna make a note on the drawing that it's obsolete?
Yeah, it was more, to me, is more of a key plan, you know, 'cause we're not doing anything. Nothing's changing, yeah.
Wait for digits.
Right.
The square feet expansion, proposed square feet will be how much now?
The proposed square feet will be how much now? Not 1,670. That's the same question I had actually.
I think you're looking at the one from 2018.
Oh, okay.
What we did was we recycled the site plan from 2018. So, there's a couple of notes there, like for example, where it says we're getting a new sign. That's recycled from 2018. So, we need to clean that up a little bit. But, the addition is 2,711 square feet.
That's what we mentioned. One other thing, what is the current secondary uses, square feet is, current one? What is the current secondary uses square feet?
There's no second floor currently.
No, no. First floor, current secondary uses square feet.
Do you know how many square feet are taken up currently by the offices, conference room?
Of that specific area?
Yeah, the non-showroom area.
Right.
Oh, I, I don't have that specific number, no.
Michael, would you guys accept as a condition that the plans be updated, you know, to reflect current conditions?
Yeah.
Have the accurate zoning chart?
Yep.
And have the proper site plan stuff?
Yeah, yeah. We can go through, I think it's PB1-2, and just clean it up, get rid of some of the things that are no longer applicable here. I think if Mr. Sires was here, he would say, you can't tell, he would say all the things that are in more black, profound ink are the new things, and the, the stuff in gray that you cannot tell, or lighter in color are the old.
At least 40% of the board had questions.
I understand. So, we can, we can do better, sure.
But for the sake, you know... On the first floor and on the second floor, the existing gross square footage are on those plans. So, that's 6,874 square feet on the first floor, and that 2,711 square feet on the proposed second floor.
But, if you're gonna be cleaning it up for the...
We'll clean it up. We'll clean it up.
You know, not a problem, yeah.
Do you have additional questions?
No, thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Hen, so, just a couple of questions. So, the, the first floor, the area that's currently offices, is that gonna be reclaimed for a showroom?
The majority of it, yes.
Is that, is that visible somewhere? I'm sorry. Is that visible? Like, is there an exhibit that shows what that reclaimed area would look like?
Yeah, if you look at PB1-3, so you got the whole showroom area here. It extends off to the right. Then, there's a whole separate designated area planned for Rolex. So, it's just a small portion back here that's remaining, which still services the showroom, like the jewelry pair, polishing room. That kinda stays, you know, with that first floor, you know, showroom space. But, you know, so the majority of this is now showroom space.
This is gonna be proposed, and then what is the current?
That's that exhibit one.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see.
So, this is, this is all the secondary space now that's moving upstairs.
And then regarding the second floor, I would imagine that a facility like this has a pretty intact security system?
Yeah.
Continue up on the, the second floor, and are there any, anything else besides windows up there?
Anything else besides windows?
There's no doors, like to the terrace or anything like that?
Um, there's the door that goes to the outside, and there is an access to the rooftop, just for like, you know, you know, easy access and getting, you know, getting to the roof. I mean, you know, for servicing.
Like, I guess, could somebody like bring a ladder, something, climb up on the second floor, on the roof, and right, enter through the...
Like, I imagine the, the security system will go throughout the second floor as well?
I, I know that they have a very extensive security there.
Be enforced for the door?
I'm sure. I'm sure. I'm, I don't get into those nuances, but I'm, I'm...
Don't be giving anybody ideas.
Yeah.
I won't be putting the details in there.
Yeah, you know, I designed it, and I feel like, you know, a couple times I've been in there, it's like, whoa, you know, like, you, you know, it's tight.
We just wanna make sure that the, the facility remains secure, you know.
I'm sure they take every precaution, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a question on construction. What is the construction timeline that you assume it will take?
You know, I, I think they were talking like next year. So, you know, that was, I guess there's some, still some things with the Rolex, you know, and some negotiations that are going on there. But, yeah, we're expecting sometime next year, I think was the, the game plan.
And once you start construction, how long would you anticipate it taking?
You know, I would hope within, you know, six, eight months.
And can you clarify, the height of the building right now is measured in the top, in the very front, the top, the very top point of the building, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's that, that facade at the front, that's that 31 feet. And then, if you look at the extension on the back, 27 feet. To that peak.
So, it'll sit still below that 31 foot?
It's still below that 31 feet. This is, you kinda see the profile of the, the second floor addition here, you know, being lower than that, that tall part.
Which is why it didn't raise the whole height of the building.
That's right.
And there is no proposed lighting on the outside of the building on the second floor?
No. Yeah, no.
No other questions from the board, right? Can I open up to the, our board professionals, please?
I just had a, just a couple of quick questions. So, from a parking perspective, you hit it pretty quickly. I just wanna make sure. We heard testimony that there's no changes to the site plan, the site improvements that exist today. From a parking perspective, with the, with the expanded second story, is the testimony that you already have sufficient parking onsite to accommodate the additional parking that would be required?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, yeah. So, with the proposed addition, we would require 38 spaces, and we currently have 47 spaces. So, yeah, we're, we're still good.
And we, we just heard your, your response to Ms. Sikora about the, the lighting. As far as landscaping is concerned, very well manicured landscape property, is any of that do you envision gonna be disturbed or damaged by way of the, the addition, the construction?
It's construction, so something might happen towards the back, I would suspect, you know, and I'm sure that that would get repaired and put back.
Everything would be restored?
Yeah, that, that's the goal here, yeah.
Addition, you'll repair, restore, replace as needed, any damage?
Yeah, that makes sense.
And last question is, you know, how, how would you, would you characterize this addition simply to accommodate the, the requirements that are being imposed by Rolex? Or, does this represent any type of expanded use or expansion of the ability of, you know, of the store to operate? Or is it generally just taking existing spaces from the first floor, moving them upstairs so that the first floor can be reorganized to accommodate, accommodate Rolex and their requirements? Is that...
Yeah, Rolex and their uses as well, you know, just to get more showroom space.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I have one more question. Obviously, you are expecting larger number of customers.
I guess we would hope so, right?
If you increase the number, if still, it will accommodate the number of parking lots that you have got already?
Yeah, we're, I'm sure we're still gonna have enough parking spots. Even now, we, you know, we don't, you know, you don't fill this, the lot, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're, they're currently nine, well, they're, they're gonna be nine spaces over what the ordinance requires, and right now, they, they have no, no parking concerns. I mean, I would ask you, to your knowledge, are there any parking concerns on the site?
No, not that we know of, no.
Thank you.
Samad. Have any plans for a construction office trailer or storage trailers?
I would leave that up to the GC at that time. I, I don't, not gonna be managing that part of it. I don't think we had one in the past for the other work. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I, I would suspect there, there might be something, but I, it would be up to the GC.
Sometimes they accumulate a lot of extraneous material around the trailers. We just wanna keep them neat.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think that, you know, just from the previous constructions too, I don't think there was any issues, you know.
I think if they, if there are a construction trailer, you might have to come in for site plan or some sort of zoning permit, if there were a construction trailer.
I don't, I'm not sure for temporary structures, I'm not sure. But, we'll, we will comply with, you know, whatever the construction mitigation measures are, whatever your ordinance requires to ensure that the site is kept well. I mean, it's, it's important for their image that the site looks good even when it's open and when it's going through construction. So, we'll certainly commit to keeping the site as clean as possible during construction.
Yeah.
Any concerns with that?
I don't have any concerns with that, no.
Yeah, I don't think we had a construction trailer the last time around, and that was a bigger, more invasive construction. We're excavating and doing foundations and stuff like that. So, this is just going up.
Keep it on wheels.
Roll it away.
Ms. Samad, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Most of everything that was in the review memo was covered, which I appreciate. Just one question on sheet PB1-5 on the architectural elevations for the rear elevation. First question, I guess, is, is the building materials and colors that exist, are they being matched for the addition?
Yes, that's the intent.
And then, the, the upper, the proposed second story at the rear here, it, it appears that it has a different texture than what's shown for the existing first floor. Is that intentional, or is it going to be a different color? Can you just describe if there's gonna be differences between the two?
Mostly just to show the difference between existing and proposed.
Understood. Thank you very much. That's all I had.
Thank you. I'll open up for the public, for any questions from the public for this witness. We'll close that, that portion. We have a second witness.
So, I, I don't have a second witness. I just, I have just a, one closing remark regarding the sewer utility memo prepared by Mr. Genova dated August 5th, 2025. Not that I necessarily have an objection to it. I just don't, I don't understand it. I don't know what, when he's referring to a sewer connection application, if that's the application process to calculate if there's additional usage, or if he's suggesting that there's a new connection fee needed, because of, I, I can't, I can't tell from his report.
Are you proposing to do anything with your sewer? Are you increasing the pipe size or your connection or...
No, we're adding a bathroom on the second floor.
Yeah, that's not our intent. It's just we're adding a bathroom upstairs.
And will that affect your calculations for, you know, your...
It, I would think that very de minimis, it could, and we'll comply with whatever the township's...
Is, yeah, that, that comply with the township sewer regs.
Right.
If I can, real quick, I, I don't, I agree with Mr. Silbert. I, I don't know exactly what the specific ask is. You know, it does mention, the memo does mention the submission of a sewer connection application. I do know that the township back in 2022 amended its sewer ordinance as it relates to connection fees. And there is a clause about for uses other than single-family dwellings, a new connection permit shall be applied for, even for, for building additions.
Okay.
So, I, I think you need to take a look at, at that ordinance, Mike, but...
Okay.
It, it speaks about basically checking the service demand and the impacts on the sewer trunk lines and the sanitary sewer facilities for the township. It may be fee-related...
Okay.
But, I did, I do see that there's the amended ordinance, so...
I saw that in the ordinance too. I just wasn't sure if, I, I just, when I read that, I assumed that sewer app, sewer connection application just meant it encompasses everything, potentially not a new connection fee, or, I thought it was maybe just the way the terms are just defined, but, okay, that's...
I don't think it's a new fee. It may be an amended fee.
Okay, excellent. So, we'll comply with...
Will say comply with all township sewer regulations and payment of any associated fees?
Yes, that's perfect. Thank you.
I would say ordinances.
Ordinances.
Are there any other comments or questions? Thank you very much. Do you have any closing?
Uh, just very quickly, I'm, I'm, I've had the privilege of working on a lot of applications in Bridgewater, and I'm happy to see that there's a brick and mortar, small business that's expanding. That's, that's, that's very nice to see. It's a tough, tough real estate market for brick and mortar retail, and this is, this is a great thing. So, I was happy to be part of the application, so.
I agree. We need to buy lot of jewelers, no.
Should just technically open to the public, even though there's no public here, but just open for the public to general comment.
I'll open it up to the public for general comment.
Seeing none?
Seeing none. We'll close that portion of this application.
So, now it's not for board deliberations?
So, we'll open it up for board deliberations. Go down the line. Mr. Pappas?
I support this. This business has been in Bridgewater for many years. Used to be at, in the Bridgewater Commons Mall. My wife and I have been customers for years. We've got our wedding rings there, our engagement ring, and Lucy's a great corporate citizen. Congratulations on your success.
It's a nice location. You see a lot of traffic. There's a lot of, you don't form an impression on people. It's a very nice building. I just hope to be able to keep it somewhat neat and clean during the construction period. But, I would agree with it.
Thank you, Mr. Magora. Mr. Benga?
Yeah, I support this. Everything seems in order. I appreciate how they've taken a great lens of keeping with the facade and kinda hiding it behind the Sires. Thank you.
Mr. Taudry?
Yes, I also support this. Actually, obviously, I go probably most of the time there, and a best by another. So, I really like the building, and hopefully, at least, you know, as everybody's saying, as long as it is below the overall height of 31 feet, which is 27 feet, should be okay. Wish you a great business opportunities, you know, increase one with your Rolex. You know, we'd like this Bridgewater to be succeeded in a business like yours. Thank you.
I too am in support. I, I'm excited to see a small business grow as Roman Jewelers. I too have been a customer of there. Not so much of a great story as, as you have. However, I am in support of, of the application. So, should I, do you wanna repeat the motion?
It would be to grant the minor subdivision applica, minor site plan application of, of the applicant with the conditions, yeah, nothing amended. But, the conditions would be the standard conditions applicable to any approval. And then, I also had, you know, they just have to do that minor plan cleanup to submit that, repair, restore, replace as needed, any landscaping damage during construction, and then follow the township sewer ordinance and pay any associated fees.
And, and add that note to, about the plans. No, with the...
And, and add that note to, about the plan, no, the roof gutters would be directed.
Oh, okay, roof gutters.
Yes.
That's from your memo?
That was in the memo, yes.
Roof gutters be directed into the existing-
Site drainage facilities. Thank you.
That's it, so it'd be to approve the minor site, site plan with the conditions as stated.
That was Mr. Pappas? Can I get a second? That's Mr. Chowdhury.
Yes.
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 Yes, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's buy-
Ask for other board business.
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to give the board a brief update. As you know, the master plan has been on our minds to get it done. We did have the master plan element, the housing element fair share plan, that was, had a deadline set in June, so that was took priority as far as getting that done with vacation schedules, everything else. The master plan is now, it has a plan, it has a timeline, and we're looking to adopt it at the end of September. September only has one meeting due to Labor Day, so we only have a meeting right now scheduled for the 16th. Maria will be sending out an email, pulling the board members to see their availability for September 30th. There's a bonus Tuesday in September, September 30th is the last Tuesday. So we were looking to maybe do a special meeting that evening. As I mentioned, Maria will pull the board via email to determine your availability for that, so that we could move it forward that evening. And right now, we're just in the kind of finalization steps, crossing i, crossing t's, dotting i's, et cetera, to get it, to get it all wrapped up.
Got it. So the plan is for September 16th, the master plan won't be ready for that meeting?
No, I don't think so. We're just, we're still bringing it back to the table with the ad hoc, because there was an ad hoc committee, so the ad hoc committee hasn't seen the draft yet, the close-to-final draft. So there's still those little, little cleanup tweaks that do take a little bit of time because they're scheduling meetings and things like that. So to make sure, because there is a 10-day notice period, similar to the housing element, this would have to be on file by September 9th, it would have to be on file by September 5th if we were going to hear it on the 16th, which is like a week and a half away. With the Labor Day holiday and all of that, we decided, let's just push it to the end of September. September 19th would be when we'd have to notice and file it by. So it will be public, done by September 19th, hopefully heard and adopted on the 30th.
Great. And there is currently no business for the 16th of September, right?
Right now, I don't think, I don't think we have anything right now, Maria, correct? Nothing right now.
And nothing on the 2nd?
2nd is no meeting, there's no meeting that night. We don't, I don't think we have it on our calendar. No, there's, there's a zoning board meeting, so we can't, we don't have a meeting between then. Would be on September 30th. It would be on the 30th, yeah.
And the board should stay tuned for a vote, for an email-
An update.
-for any of us could, could attend on the 30th.
Yes, correct. This board will have the plan, hopefully we can release it the 10-day, when it, when it's going to be public, let's say. So you'll have it at least 10 days in advance of the hearing to look through it.
Is there any other board business?
No, just so the board is aware, we do have some things coming up for the October meetings. October, we have a meeting on the 7th and the 21st, and there are applications that are right now under completeness. And, yeah, so we'll have some, some board business to do in October.
Great. Presentation on the 7th and then 21st.
We have part of their reclamation plan and the recommendation regarding their license.
Great, thank you.
And then just final question, can you have mentioned last time the housing element, the modern housing, there's like a raised period?
Yes.
Will we be notified or however like that, there's no objection?
Hopefully, yes. Well, they have, the objection or the challenge period runs until August 31st, and so that's next week, with end of next week. So anyone who seeks to challenge it can do until then. Hopefully, we'll get notified by the affordable housing attorneys for the township. If anything does come up, I'm not aware of anything yet. And thereafter, you know, this board will be made aware of anything that goes on as far as any happenings with that.
See no other board business? I'll close that portion of the meeting, and then if I could request an adjournment motion? That's Mr. Benga? Everyone wants a second. That's Mr. Chowdhury. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, good.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, no, can't argue with that. It's such a nice night, it's a shame the sun's down.
It was so pretty outside.
Oh, I've been loving it the last two days.
I wasn't even outside, I walked outside like, oh. Yes, yes.